The election is March 2nd and ballots have already been mailed out to all registered voters. My name is David Taub, Senior Reporter with GV Wire. And joining us tonight are Von Monatua, a healthcare executive and Clovis Councilman running for his second term, Lynn Ashbeck, also a healthcare executive running for her sixth term, Noah Elbaz, a former educational executive, Diane Pierce, a businesswoman and president of the Fresno County Republican Women, and Herman Nagra, a businessman. Thank you for joining us and thank you for joining us online live on Facebook while watching the replay. If you are watching live, please send us your questions and comments through Facebook. This format will be a little bit more relaxed than other formats of debates. I will ask the questions and I want to hear answers. I may follow up or I may want to hear debate from other candidates. There are no strict time limits in your answers, but the goal is to foster discussion, so I may ask you to move it along. And as a note of disclosure, GV Wire's publisher Dari Sessomi is the CEO of Granville Homes. Granville has contributed to the fundraising campaigns of Mr. Monatua and Ms. Ashbeck. However, the topics and questions are mine. So let's get right to it. We'll start with the growth and expansion of Clovis. The city continues to build more houses to meet the demand and state mandates. So my question is, is Clovis building the right mix of homes, affordable housing, and apartments? And Noah, we'll start with you. And Noah, make sure everybody's good as well. Thank you.
Yeah, got it. All right. Thank you very much, David, and thank you for having us on. So in terms of Clovis, it has been, it has been wonderful to see the growth that has been happening. However, we do need to ensure that while we are growing, that we are doing so in a responsible way. We do need to ensure that we have an appropriate amount of affordable housing that is building in the community. Because right now, we do have a lot of people who come to work in Clovis, but unfortunately can't afford to live here. So there are a lot of benefits to affordable housing and we have to make sure that that balance is there. In addition to that mixture of the homes that are going up, we have to ensure that as we build these new housing developments, that we have the appropriate mixture of educational facilities, open space, and park facilities that make our community as a whole vibrant. We do have in many parts of the city, our schools are incredibly overcrowded. So as this growth happens, it's important that there is an appropriate balance to get our class size under control, to get the overcrowding under control, so that a main reason people come to Clovis are wonderful schools, so we don't damage them in the process and turn that into a reason that people move away.
So are you saying that you need to build more schools as well, or at least?
We do, more schools, more affordable housing, absolutely, absolutely. That really builds into the vibrancy of the community as a whole and ensures great outcomes for all of our kids.
All right, Diane, so how should Clovis expand? And what does the future of housing look like in Clovis and what should you do about it if you are elected to council?
Yeah, I think it's a great question and I think a lot of people, it's one of the top topics on their mind is growth in the city. We see it everywhere. It's explosive. And as far as single-family homes and those residential neighborhoods, I don't think there is a question that that's going on plenty all over the place. You see, as soon as a developer's neighborhood is announced, it's virtually sold out and they're starting on the next version of it. So the residential development is definitely going quite well. My concern as far as that particular issue is that oftentimes the city puts out kind of complete promises for these development projects. And the housing is just the first element of it. There's usually parks and green space, which sometimes are coordinated with the neighborhoods, but also retail is supposed to follow those rooftops and commercial and other things to come along as well to kind of keep that whole city growth going, rather than just a bunch of residential neighborhoods potentially on the outskirts that people are having to come into town and that creates traffic problems, et cetera. And that's the one thing I don't see following the residential development with the same kind of fervor that the houses are being built, is those other developments coming along behind. As far as affordable housing goes, I think that the city has put itself in a position where there's plenty of that available. They're waiting, in a sense, for people to come along and want to build that or have the funding or subsidies to take on those projects. The one thing I think people need to be aware of in terms of the affordable housing issue is that what the situation is now is the city has a citywide overlay that allows for this affordable housing to be built all over the city. And it's also been allowed to be done by right, which means that there's no longer a need for council approval or community input on these projects. And so a lot of times our neighborhoods are looking for an opportunity to weigh in and say whether or not they feel a particular project is right for that area. When it comes to affordable housing, they don't have that option anymore.
Diane, we'll leave it at there. Herman, what does the future of Clovis housing look like to you?
Well, as council member, I wouldn't want a conflict of interest. So I would never take a donation from a big builder or a developer. Right now, in our southeast area, we are in the red zone for our fire department, meaning that our fire department cannot get to that area in the amount of time that is safe. First, we must have the resources such as a fire department station in that area before we expand. For affordable housing, I do believe that people should be able to work, to live where they work. I would want my employees to be able to live close to my business. However, with high-density housing, we can have problems with crime. So we do have to be very smart about it. But we should have a safety net for people who have lost their jobs, had their averages reduced, or have an illness. So we must have that safety net with affordable housing, but we cannot expand. Our city has expanded at a very high rate. We cannot have the influence from the builders on the city council.
Herman, thank you. Von, Councilman Monatua, you've been dealing with this for the last four years. Where do you build affordable housing and what should expanded housing, where we build it in Clovis?
See, this issue is quite complex. That's why I think a lot of the answers have been a bit short-sighted, you can say, because the understanding of development and how it develops is that you need to understand what land use is. Not only that, by being on the planning commission, we're 10 years, I understand all the applications that come forward. And then you also have to understand what those state laws are, what are those that are required. And sitting on the Housing and Economic Development of the League of Cities, I can see that our job is only to provide zoning. And so to say that the city must build, the city must, the city builds nothing. We can't build anything. We have enough zoning for all the mixed types of housing that is required of our city. Developers come and build. There is no incentive, meaning there's no monies from the state to us to give to any developer to build any type of housing. So because of that, it has to be a developer themselves, just like the housing authority is a developer. So they bought that land, they built it according to whatever the requirements of the city are, so they can build that product. And so that's important to understand. We are just building according to our general plan, whether that goes fast or slow is no issue, because we have planned for it. We have done the environmentals for it and we have allocated enough mix for it. One of the policies we have is to have diverse housing products in our general plan. And we are following that pretty much to the T.
All right, Councilman, thank you very much. And Councilwoman Ashbeck, what does housing look like? Where do you need affordable housing? What areas of this town should be built up?
Housing is an equation. It's partly a city role and it's partly the free market role. So I think that all of the issues that you've heard tonight go together in this sort of equation. So in terms of expansion, I'm a fan of casting a big net. Clovis is the best-planned city in the valley. We have extraordinary planners. So a larger-range vision allows us to grow. I think our general plan, we do that every 10 to 15 years, is incredibly well thought out, addresses every area of the city to make sure there's a mix of housing, so it does exist throughout our city. Affordable housing is a particular question. I think it's important, it's essential. And I want to just push back a little bit on Herman. You, I've heard you say a couple of times, it's about crime. I think as leaders, we need to not, that's a stigma we need to not perpetuate. High-density housing isn't a direct correlation to crime, so I just want to be clear about that. But it really is a combination of the role the city can play and what the free market. Diane, you made a point about following through with retail and we have heard that. But that is a business decision that a builder makes or a developer makes in a neighborhood. Again, the city is not, we've zoned it, it's available, and it's up to the builders in the community if there's a demand. One of the things that happens in Clovis that I think I hear most of all is vacant retail space. So there's a mindfulness about where you're going to go and how much retail you're going to add. And people's shopping habits have changed, but I know it's a concern. But short answer, we have an excellent general plan. It addresses all areas of our city, affordable housing and otherwise. And we expect all parts of our community to live up to the same standard of excellence.
Councilman, thank you. Herman, rebuttal?
I own a business that's in a high-density area. And I deal with crime every day because of that high-density housing where there's Section 8. And not necessarily because it's Section 8 do we have a lot of crime in that area, but high-density has produced that. And my question would be that there has been pushback from our city council to have high-density housing, to have low-income housing. If it's not because of crime, then why is it? Why is our city facing a lawsuit?
All right, and I think as mentioned, that housing is complex, especially when you have a lot of state mandates. And a recent law that's meant to affect last year is calculating a vehicle's mile traveled as a standard to mitigate the rebuild housing in and creates just a whole new set of ways that, you know, instead of normally putting in a street light to help mitigate traffic, you put in a bus line. So real quickly, I just want to go around, you know, what are plans that you would have to reach the state mandate, at least to comply with it? And Diane, we'll start with you.
I think it's part of the problem that we see in the state of California as far as those types of mandates coming down from Sacramento, because it really is in line with the policies that are trying to get us out of our gas-powered cars. And, you know, I mean, we see the debacle of high-speed rail. Almost weekly, there's a new story about the disaster that that project is. But all of these policies are kind of in line with that same type of thinking, where we want to force people out of their cars and into these other things. So the VMT laws or the vehicle miles traveled are another way, as you were saying, to kind of charge people for where they live. If they choose to live in an area that isn't by this algorithm close to where they're going to work or where they're going to shop or where they're going to play, they're going to be charged more because of that travel. But that's obviously unfair and not a good way to go about how.
Diane, it's a law. I don't think there's a way you can get around it. So what VMT measures would you prefer when you approve new housing?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Well, what measures that the VMT law or mandates would you prefer? I mean, everything you're saying is fine and good, but with the state mandate, you can't control, you can't reverse that.
No, I think what we need out of our city leadership is to be aware of these things when they're coming about. And I know there was a lot of talk about it. Frankly, GV Wire addressed it a number of times. And even State Senator Andreas Borges was kind of against the measure itself. And that's really where I think a lot of this needs to come in, is being vocal about these things at the outset and trying to make sure that we're educating the public on what is coming out of Sacramento. Because I think there is a lot of pushback against it, but again, once the things are done and we have this one-party rule in Sacramento that just kind of forces these things down our throat, there's only so much we can do.
All right, Councilman, thank you. Councilwoman Ashbeck, you know, if you have to implement a VMT measure when you approve a new house, housing tract, what do you prefer?
We are, we have been prepared for it. Our staff has worked hard on it. We have a collaborative relationship with folks in the community also doing this work. Again, it's a partnership between the city and folks that are actually doing the building. Again, to a point Herman made, not to, not to call you out again, but being supported by builders doesn't mean you're influenced by them. So that's another myth I think we need to set aside, but we'll go back to that maybe later. But we're lucky in Clovis in that the impact of VMT will be felt in our northwest village, which is relatively kind of still a clean slate. So we're working on our city plans, we're working on transit, transit routes both in Clovis and connecting to Fresno. So we have an opportunity to make it work and Clovis will make it work. That is what we do and we will adjust our plans accordingly.
Right, Herman, real brief, what do VMT measures look like to you?
You should be able to shop, live, and work in your local proximity. I moved to Clovis when I was nine years old from England, and that's how it is in Europe. You're able to shop, live, and work, and it's really walkable. However, cars are all-American, and as a gas station owner, I do want people to drive more. And but it's a law that we're going to have to take into account and our city is doing that now. And as long as there's no conflict of interest, we're doing a good job in that.
Councilman Monatua, what's your favorite VMT measure that you would suggest for these new home developments?
I, you know, there's quite a few. I mean, I just want to state before I answer that is that, see, VMT hurts the poorest amongst us. It's going to increase the price of a home $20,000, $40,000, yet they always say, "We want to help the poor, we want to help the poor." Yet they impose all these restrictions on. They put in the Groundwater Sustainable Act, which now you can't build. And so in other words, everything hurts the most vulnerable, yet we say we want to help them. Now with Clovis, we have analyzed VMT, we have provided measures. One is probably just to mitigate, where you kind of pay, this is what the cost will be and I'm going to pay for it. The other is, how do we plan for it? And that's the key. We need to plan where here are going to be the transit hubs. How do we improve our transit so that way it becomes VMT-qualifiable, so that way it lowers the VMT? The third thing is, we need to work closely with the county. The county controls this. And we need to work together so that way VMT is applied equally to cities like Fresno, Clovis, and even small cities like Huron and Parlier and Orange Cove. All this, the small cities are going to suffer the most because we have no transit hubs.
Councilman, we'll wrap it up there. Thank you. And Ms. Elbaz, we'll let you wrap this one up. What are your favorite vehicle miles traveled mitigation measures?
Yeah, I do think that it is important that we take into account these measures, that, you know, keeping in mind the emissions that are going out, you know, these are important things. We have to plan ahead for them. Yes, we do have to increase access to public transportation. We have to make sure that there is more availability of these things to be able to decrease it. I understand, you know, that that has an impact on gas station owners and gas sold and things of that nature. But, you know, we work as a community, we plan around it. I think this is part of, part of that planning process. And these mandates are brought down for a reason, and I do think they do us some good.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to our next topic now. And if you're watching live on Facebook, feel free to share a question you want to hear asked. We'll try to work it in there. So I spoke with all you candidates last week. Several of you said that COVID recovery was your top issue running in this campaign. So how has Clovis handled the pandemic when it comes to enforcing the stay-at-home order and mask rules? And what are your policies to foster recovery? Lynn, we'll begin with you.
I think in the, Clovis, I think has done an exceptional job in managing the pandemic. In the beginning, we recognized the need to follow the state mandates because we didn't understand a pandemic. And that's the definition of a pandemic. And Clovis, like every other city in California, followed those mandates. It became quickly clear to us that it didn't quite work with our business community and all of that and the council's wishes. So I think Clovis did a really good job. I think we had really inconsistent messages coming from the state. One day it was this, one day it was that, and all of that made it much more difficult for, for cities. 10, 12 months later, it's a different environment. In the beginning, I think everybody did a great job. We stayed home through May, numbers came down. It was getting back to work. That was great. Then numbers were bad again, so we were closed. Then they were open and closed. So I think, but now 12 months almost into this, I think the focus needs to be on the recovery going forward. And I think our recovery plan and our policies are, we're well-positioned to do that. We have strong support for small business. We're looking at ordinances to make new businesses easier, to make reuse of existing buildings and businesses easier for folks to do. We're looking at what to do with retail vacancies if that occurs. And supporting our employees, our workers, our folks that are in our community that needed help with housing, utility relief. Clovis has done an exceptional job around the COVID-19 pandemic.
Councilwoman, thank you. Noah Elbaz, did the city get it right with the following stay-at-home orders, following mask-wearing orders, and what does recovery look like for you?
Sure. I think that our response as a city has been very similar to the response as a whole across the state and unfortunately across much of the country, because there has not been a federal response. And having everyone on the same page, there has been a lot of scramble. So that unevenness has really created hardship for our small businesses. Because as someone who's run multimillion-dollar businesses, the most difficult thing you can have is uncertainty. So having a certain level of certainty with which we allow our small businesses to function, allowing them to use their entrepreneurial spirit, allows them to be able to be successful. But where I see our problem is that we have been inconsistent in terms of, of really leading by example on the things that we know can help, things like wearing masks, things like socially distancing, things like avoiding indoor dining, you know. And instead, you know, we've had scenarios where we have different businesses across the community doing different things. And that's creating instability in our market, because we have consumers who are afraid to frequent businesses because they don't feel like health, their health and safety is being taken into consideration. So what I would love to see from, from all of our leadership in the community and all of us as citizens within the community are to do the things that we know will help. Avoiding going out when we don't have to be, socially distancing, wearing our masks. If my seven-year-old and my 11-year-old can wear a mask throughout the day because it allows them to be in school, we can do it as adults. So that, that is really important. You know, there has, there has been some mention that we should have just let this thing run free. But just, just to give you an example of that, had we done, had we followed the example of, say, a South Dakota, right? Where they just kind of let it go, where they had these, you know, a huge rally that took place in the city. Had we done that, we would have lost more than 800,000 people in our state. So that, you know, this idea of, of, you know, herd immunity, we cannot do these things. There is not an acceptable amount of people that we can continue to lose for this pandemic. So I think right now, I would not go through and shut down businesses. But what I would encourage is consistent and clear messaging on the steps that we need to take to mitigate our risk. And so that way, we can move forward as a community in terms of supporting.
No, I think we're going to move on. Diane, I know, I've seen you post on your Facebook that you enjoy the indoor dining in Clovis. And Clovis seems to be one of the few places around here that are still offering indoor dining. So did the city get it right? Should they be enforcing mask mandates? And what does recovery look like?
For everyone, has been that most of the response has been born out of frustration. And I think that whether you look at individual cities or counties or states, what you really see more than anything is that local control isn't just important, it's essential when it comes to these things. Because even on a state level, what Gavin Newsom has done, running all over the map, and as Lynn even said, it's like, we don't even know what's going on from week to week. Are we in tears? Are we in colors? Are we in, you know, dimmer switches or are we on a roadmap? And that's really the problem. And what Clovis wound up having is a bunch of businesses that said, "Look, we can't do this. We have to survive. And to do that, we have to be open." And they had to do that without necessarily all of the support of surrounding areas and such. The leadership took a vote, our city council took a vote in May about whether or not to remove our local ordinances that would essentially ease the restrictions on our businesses and give them local ability to reopen and do things responsibly. And our city council vote on that was four in favor of that, and one person voted against that, and that was Lynn Ashbeck. And that is why I went first to our businesses when I was considering this campaign and asked them how they felt about this response. And I have incredible support and endorsements from our business owners in Old Town and other areas of the city, because they didn't feel heard. They didn't feel that they had a seat at the table. Nobody came to them at the outset to see what their participation could be and their input could be on how we came together as a city. I think that's something that as a small business owner, I bring a diversity of experience and a unique perspective to the table. Because in the beginning, when we took a couple of weeks to just take a step back, gather information, figure out what the right response is going to be, I would have brought those people to the table. You bring your medical experts, you bring your law enforcement, you bring your elected leaders, and you bring your business people to the table so that everyone can participate. The businesses can say, "These are the measures that I am fully capable of implementing and operating safely for myself, my employees, my customers." We could have had fewer businesses that needed to close because they couldn't operate safely. Bob Wayland.
Lynn, do you want a quick rebuttal?
I do. I think Diane is misrepresenting that vote. The vote was not about opening businesses or closing. The vote was on the language in the emergency ordinance for the city of Clovis. And as reported in the Clovis roundup, and Diane has done a good job of reading the first part of the sentence, but not the rest, "My no vote was not about the businesses, was about the clarity of the language. In my view, we gave businesses no more direction than we did the day before. The day after that vote, people were like, 'Well, can we open or not?' So my no vote was on the clarity of the resolution. I was looking for more clarity, more affirmative action of what businesses could do, not what they can't. So that has been a theme that Diane, I know, has used in her narrative throughout this entire campaign. But it is fundamentally false and not fair to use the first part of the sentence and not the part that doesn't quite fit the narrative. So thank you for a chance to comment on that.
Lynn, let's hear from Herman. Herman, has the city of Clovis got it right during the pandemic? And what are your thoughts about how the city can help with recovery?
I do not believe our city has got it right. We don't have a clear, concise message. I had called a restaurant to see if they were open, and on the phone, they had told me that, "No, they are not." When I asked them further, they said, "Oh, as long as you're not the city, we are open." It's a prohibition on business. That's what it is. We need a clear, concise message. As a business owner of an essential business, I'm fortunate. But had it not been an essential business, I would have to think, do I feed my family or keep my business open and jeopardize my position with the city? So what we needed was that, an advocate on the city council for all of the business community to say that we are with you during this pandemic and we are not going to have you forced to be shut down because the lockdowns are not working. We've had an increase in the homicide rate in 2020, the highest in 25 years in Fresno County. That wouldn't occur if the lockdowns were working.
All right, and Councilman Monatua, we'll give you the last word on this issue. You voted on this. Why'd you vote the way you did? And what does, how does it look like?
It was the right thing to do. It was the right thing to do. And I think that, you know, in hindsight, many of us will go, "I would have done this or that." I don't know, you know, we can be real good at it. But what Clovis did was we used our relationships. We worked closely with the businesses. We looked at the seniors and we said, "Okay, where are CBDC funds? Where can we use to help?" So we took almost a million dollars and we said, "Let's feed our seniors and let's keep them healthy." Even right now, what we're doing is, we said, "Okay, seniors are able to get vaccines." We said, "Let's transport them. We will transport everyone 65 and over to wherever they want to go to get their vaccine." So we worked with the businesses. We said, "Let's open it up. Let's allow them to eat outside, waive fees." Okay, work. And then what we did was, the relationships why it works, we work with fire, we work with planning, and we work with economic development. So that way, we can go, "That will be safe. That will be that. We'll waive fees." And that, that's what happened. And then for them, for the people who lost jobs, we took 1.4 million of savings that we were going to have because we didn't build out some of the CBDG funds and gave it to help with rental assistance. And lastly, I just want to say, we also looked after city staff. We extended COVID leave all the way from the beginning of our, where we declared emergency, and we gave it till now. And so we took care of our staff with proper PPE and, and everything that they needed as well to be flexible.
A follow-up for you. There's been criticism for you of not wearing a mask in public. Both, and they feel you should have to set an example, both as your position as a councilman, as a healthcare executive. How do you address that criticism for people who think you should have been wearing a mask in public?
Well, you know, if someone could show me how they eat with a mask on, I'll be happy to, because that was a luncheon. So if someone.
It wasn't just lunch, sir.
It was a luncheon. We were eating lunch and there were speeches, of course. But if you can show me how to eat with a mask on, then I'd be happy to. And not only that, you know, with regards to a mask, allow people who also have the inability to wear it, to not wear, where they feel like they can still be safe.
All right, we are about halfway through our forum. Thank you for joining us on GV Wire Facebook. And if you're watching on replay, thank you for joining us there too. Governor Gavin Newsom was in town today. And a theoretical question. If you had a brief time, a one-on-one with him, what would you ask him? What would you say to him? Is there anything, Nathan would want to know, how would you work with the state to meet these mandates, both for the pandemic and otherwise? So Herman, if you had five minutes or so with Governor Gavin Newsom today, what would you say to him?
Governor Newsom, stop sending our business to Texas. All of our companies that were California-made are going to Texas. You need to do something about it. You need to stop making investment a burden. That's what, that's my conversation with our governor, is we want Clovis to be a hub where companies like Tesla, like IBM want to locate, because they know that their city supports them. Right now, our state doesn't support them. They're running away to Texas. And we're losing out because of it, the social capital and the tax money as well.
Uh, Councilman Montua, you get five minutes with the governor today. What would you say to him?
Give us more vaccines. Our, our, our most vulnerable really need vaccines. Can you give us more vaccines? Second, with universal homelessness, let's really partner together because they are on state grounds. And so how do we work together to really rectify this situation? And the last thing I would say is, you know, when, when the state distributed care is funding, they left our cities with five hundred thousand, below five hundred thousand population. So we, we were left with nothing. We were left scrambling. And it had to take our leadership on the county to vote to give almost six hundred thousand for us. And so I, I, I wish all cities would have been treated the same, all cities would have been provided um uh care's funding. And vaccines would have been given to the most vulnerable and that process, so that way they can be safe uh before some of us taking it.
Noah Elba, as you get five minutes with the governor today, what would you say to him?
First and foremost, you have to lead by example. And you have to show consistency in the messages that are coming from the governor's office, right? So it does us no service, uh, you know, no matter what side of the aisle someone might fall on. When you're hearing that the governor is asking you to do something and then you hear the governor himself is not doing the same thing. So it's very important in the same way that I expect that from our leadership here, you know, in, in appropriately showing, um, you know, mask wearing and socially distancing and all of that. We need that coming from the governor's office. Because that allows people to have faith and, you know, do as I say, right? Not as I do. That, that's a real problem from a messaging perspective and, and really just from a public safety perspective. And I'll agree with, with Vong on this, that we need access to more vaccines. This is key in allowing us to be able to protect the community and able to be, you know, in order for us to be able to open our schools more fully and get our kids and everyone back to normal. We have to get as many vaccines into arms as possible. I know I, I just can't wait until I get mine. So that's, that's where I would go.
Councilwoman Ashbeck, what would you say to the governor?
Uh, I would say pick three things or five things and follow them consistently and don't change your mind. We know now the science is not dramatically changing. So pick three things, five things, and let's be consistent. I would ask him to foster regional strategies around COVID nineteen. It doesn't do any good if they do one thing in Madera and another thing in Fresno and Clovis is different from Selma. It just doesn't make any sense. So give us some regional infrastructure to solve these problems together. And I would agree with Noah, I would ask him to model the behavior he expects from the rest of us. Uh, so I think uh those, that's what I would, that's what I would say to him. And vaccines would be great.
All right, thank you. And Diane Pierce, I think you've let your feelings know about the governor, no, uh, no, but you have five minutes with him today. What would you tell him?
But I'm actually probably gonna disappoint a lot of people who think that I would have some five minute tirade about all of his failures. While that would be running in my mind, I would not waste my time saying that to his face because it wouldn't really do any good. So I would focus on three things. I would definitely ask for more vaccines. And secondly, as just a kind of central valley consideration, we have desperate need for water. And he is doing everything to keep that from progressing and moving forward in a way we so desperately need. But absolutely, first and foremost, it's the number one issue in Clovis. It's the number one issue in virtually every community in our state. And that is public safety and his measures and what he has done out of Sacramento during this administration have absolutely categorically made every Californian less safe. He is dumping criminals back onto our street. He is a very pro criminal administration and that puts all of us in jeopardy. And I would have no problem saying that to his face and hope that maybe he would hear it enough. The fact that he puts illegal criminal aliens ahead of our citizens and makes us all so unsafe in all of those measures that he puts out there. That's a message that I would deliver directly to Governor Newsom.
All right, good answer so far. All right, this question is directed to Mr. Nagra. You were arrested last month on a felony grand theft charge, accused of stealing the campaign signs of your opponents. Uh, we're all here in the same time at the same place. Do you have anything to say to him or how do you want to address this issue?
Yes, I'm gonna start with a story. In my business, I had hired an individual called Sal. During, before the interview, I saw him outside picking up the trash. It wasn't his job. When he walked inside, I asked him a couple of questions and told him he was hired. It wasn't his job to take out the trash at that time. He hadn't even had his interview. Now, we know that, you know, every council member, every uh candidate has received a notice saying that there have been multiple complaints from residents about signs being placed on city property and on private property without permission. That has been dealt with in its own way. Now, I've seen signs getting removed where they weren't supposed to be. And yes, I, I said it right from the beginning, I did remove signs from city property and from private property where permission wasn't given. After I talked to owners and property management companies, because tenants don't have the same rights as a property manager or the owner of that land. But I like to also share with you that we need to move to what's important. That's bringing more jobs to Clovis, opening up our schools.
Well, Herman, I think we're restraining here, but uh, just like if anybody else, uh, any of the other candidates here want to respond to what Herman said about his arrest and he was just removing trash, college or science trash. Anybody want to respond to that?
Well, I was giving a, a kind of analogy to my hiring of an employee.
All right, well, doesn't look like we have any takers, uh, so I guess we'll leave it there unless last chance. No, nobody's gonna talk.
I, I will make, I'll make a comment. So again, facts matter in this deal. Not everyone has gotten a note that says their sign was in an inappropriate place. So there's that. But fundamentally, that behavior is not reflective of the Clovis values. So I think as leaders, we need to stand up and say that isn't what we do. So uh, whatever reason and whatever, whatever story about the gentleman you talked about. I just, I want to say as a sort of a city statesperson, we don't do that here. So I, I as a resident find it offensive. Um, you need to live with your own choices. But as a resident of Clovis, that is not reflective of the values of our city, full stop. It just is not. So uh, thanks for letting me say that. It's probably, I'm not judging you. You did what you did. But it's just not what our clo- our city values. So I, I will say that. I will say that.
Uh, and I'd like to respond, as an owner of a twenty four hour business, when an employee doesn't show up, my hand is automatically raised. If something in the city is wrong and I see it my, with my own eyes, that there's a sign on public property. My hand is raised for our city as well, twenty four hours a day.
This isn't about, I, it, that just doesn't make any sense. So um, it, 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 it just doesn't make any sense. So let's just, let's just leave it at that. But th- those are not the values of our city. We have ways to clean up public property. Uh, it's not about saving taxpayer money. So I think we just move on, but our values of our city are not that. And I'll just leave.
Code enforcement takes too long. I've dealt with code enforcement.
All right, Herman, I think I, Noah, have your hand up there?
I was just, yeah, I was gonna say, um, you know, I understand, uh, you know, in a, in a campaign. I understand that, that um, you know, it can be overwhelming and, and stressful when we see, you know, different opponents are, are raising X amount of dollars. And I understand that, you know, energy, you know, are, are sort of a, we, we get excited, we're kind of into this whole thing. I think some, we have to remember that at the end of the day, we are all running. Or those of you currently serving, we are looking to be in positions of leadership for our community. And sometimes we're gonna do something and look back on it and say, you know what? That wasn't the right call, right? I didn't make the right vote. Now that I look back at it, I should have re, like, I should have thought about that twice, right? Or maybe I would redo it if I had that opportunity. I think there's nothing wrong with getting to a point and saying, you know what? Yes, maybe I didn't like how those signs looked. Or somebody told me, you know, I didn't necessarily approve them there. But there certainly could have been a better way to handle it. That wouldn't leave you in a position where then you're left explaining, right? And we also can't cherry pick what laws we feel are being followed quickly enough, who should do what. We have a fantastic police department. We have continued as a group to talk about how wonderful public safety is in.
Actually, Noah, actually, I'm glad this, this leads right to our next question, Noah. So we'll keep it with you. And uh, all right, no, pause for one second. Let, let, let Vong, we'll give you the last word on this.
We'll, we'll just speak about facts. And so, you know, I, I called all the candidates that morning. What happened to my signs? I called each one and each one said, I didn't do anything. I called all the property owners, asking to see if, did your staff take the signs? They all said nothing. What am I left to do? Then I tell the police, cause it's forty eight of my signs. And so I, I called to report because I put it up at midnight and at six thirty it's gone. So it's a short window to find out what's going on. And I know that in our city, we have cameras all over the, the, um, so I just wanted to find out what happened. I, I, that's all I want. And so, you know, I, I just want, we need to have a clean, fair race. So that way, those who come after us will say, I, I want to do that. I, I want something that's fair. I want something that's clean, that's respectable. And, and that's something I think is expected of us.
All right, Herman, I'll give you thirty seconds to respond to what you hear and then we're gonna move on.
Yes, um, forty eight signs seems uh much greater than would even fit in my truck. So I, I'm not responsible for every sign that goes missing. But um, I do believe that, you know, something, you see something wrong, you, you deal with it. But also in hindsight, you know, people do things differently, yes. But um, those actions then, those don't reflect somebody that is bad per se. Because I have no record, but the police came in a military style fashion to my home. And for other crimes that are of greatness, they don't watch the cameras. But for a politician, they watch the cameras. But I have so much crime going at my business. I have license plates. Nothing gets done.
All right, well, circling back on the law enforcement theme and Noah, this one, I'll really answer this one first. Are you satisfied with the level of public safety in Clovis, so both police and fire EMTs? Um, if not, what needs to change?
I would say as an overall, we have a wonderful, uh, we, we have wonderful public safety here in Clovis. It is one of the main things that, that makes me feel comfortable as a mom to raise my young boys here. I would like to see some more um, just consistency in how, in how some of these things are applied. And really by that, what I mean is, and, and this is a whole school, uh, or a whole scale decision as a community that we need to be okay with enforcing um mandates that are there right now for everyone's safety. Because those will allow our businesses to be able to, to function in a better way. I would also want to make sure that for our fire department, um, they have done a really amazing job in terms of making the most out of the resources that they have. But I would love to see more money coming into the general fund so we can better fund our fire department um, to ensure that, that we're safe. But as, as an overall, I do feel like our public safety is, is very good here in the city of Clovis.
Diane's, this kind of ties with the discussion we have in this evening. More people means a requirement for more public safety. So are you satisfied where Clovis is now, where they can be in the future, and what needs to change?
Satisfied with your level of public safety because it's something that has to be continually maintained. And I think our police department, our fire department do an outstanding job for our city. But I think we need to be committed to continuing to give them every single bit of resource that they need, that they should be fully funded. And that we shouldn't even in times of financial challenge that we're likely to encounter coming out of this year, we know we're encountering coming out of this year. I don't want to see a single dime sacrificed from those budgets. Because if they can hire more officers, if they can improve compensation packages to make sure that they're retaining and attracting the highest quality of officers, that's what Clovis deserves. So it's not as much, in my opinion, a matter of satisfaction, but it's saying, we're doing well and we're going to keep our foot on the pedal. We're gonna press it down and make sure that we continue to head in that positive direction. And I also think that our officers are gonna have increasing challenges coming because we are starting to see a rise in crime coming out of some of the lockdown issues. We're also seeing an increase in the issue of homelessness. And so again, we need to make sure that our officers have absolutely every resource at their disposal. And we need to make sure that they're able to continue that level of service to our community at that high level that we currently enjoy. And we also need to be mindful of that as we do talk about the issue of growth, that those resources are able to continue in all areas of the city. That established neighborhoods aren't left behind and those resources aren't stretched too thin as we look at all of those different aspects of our community and the future that we're heading into.
Thanks Diane. Uh, Mr. Nagra, how do you think about public safety, police, fire, emergency in the city?
Our current uh city budget for the police was cut by a million dollars and the fire department by eight hundred thousand dollars. I would have taken funds from cultural recreation when ours lockdown had seventy five percent of twenty twenty closed or in a restriction. If we would have taken twenty five percent instead of less than five, we would have had that million dollars with the police and eight hundred thousand dollars with the fire department. We had the most wildfires last year and the highest homicide rate. They need that money. But they, the fire department does an excellent job with the amount of money they receive. Um, I agree with Noah on that uh part. For public safety, we need the money as our city expands. We did not have twelve vacancies filled because of the cuts. If our city is gonna keep expanding, to keep the public safety, we need to keep expanding our fire department and our police department.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Ashbeck, is it true that you guys cut the police budget by a million and where do we go from here?
So I, I think I've said it every time. It's not a fact. It's not true. So I, I don't know how else to say that. The public safety is a result of a whole, complete city working together. Our city department heads met and said, what can we do to prepare for COVID nineteen? The police and fire are the lion's share of our general fund. And of course, then they were able to put resources on the table. Those were not filled positions. They were not interviewed positions. They were available to hire. But the chief said, I'll hold off for a moment while we figure out COVID nineteen. That number is back to a hundred and five as the chief will proceed. He'll be the first to tell you, it's really hard to find qualified candidates. So there was no cut. So I, I really would wish people would stop saying there was a cut. There was no cut. Um, I think public safety, it's the most important thing to the city of Clovis. It's the most important thing to the city council. So that, that is a fact. We have invested in our officers, in their equipment, in drones, in canines, in real time dispatch, in safety equipment. So it's more than, it's more than a single item. It's also ensuring, uh, Herman, to your point about taking money out of the smallest budget we have in the uh city, uh, would have meant we would have stopped taking care of parks. I know you've talked about clean parks and not wanting needles in parks, all of that. So we could have not spent money, but we would have taken it out of parks. So is that what we want to do? The answer is no. So this is a complicated question. I think Vong and I have said that a couple of times tonight. If it were just as easy as one thing, that would be great, but it's not true. So our safety is important. We need to make sure we can sustain it going forward. Our property tax and sales tax is not gonna afford us the ability to hire the, the officers we're gonna need in the next twenty years. We've got.
Councilman, whoa, whoa, whoa.
What matters?
And finally, uh, Councilman Montua will wrap this up for you. Um, you know, we heard your colleagues say that the million dollar figure is not true, but how does public safety move forward from here?
Could I rebuttal?
Herman, it'll give you, give you a rebuttal right after, Vong.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, to, to say that we cut is also erroneous. When the departments come together and say, this is what we're willing to offer you, city council, will you vote on this? That is not cutting. That is working together to get through a crisis together. But this year, we're still gonna add three officers when we would have said none. Next year, we'll add six more officers to reach the one oh nine. We've gonna build fire station number six. And then our staff is, is intelligent and, and creative enough to get a funding for that. Uh, we, we brought back canons, we brought back equipment. And so all this means we value public safety. And each time they have come forward, whether it is to freeze hiring and or ask for anything, we've always said, yes, that is necessary. We will support that. We have always supported that. We support it so much that every time there is the development, police gets a say. Fire gets a say. How will the trucks go in? What will this response times be? That is how Clovis does business and we will maintain that. We will always make that a priority.
Councilman, thank you. Uh, Mr. Nagra wants you a quick rebuttal before we start concluding things.
I say to the residents, look up the twenty nineteen budget versus the twenty twenty budget to see that cut for yourselves. And those vacancies weren't filled, meaning they were needed. Additionally, the police chief isn't given a choice. If that's the budget, he has to do the best that he can do. For the budget of the culture and recreation part, I would cut twenty five percent from that budget when it was seventy five percent of the year was closed. We would still have park maintenance. We didn't have a rec center because we couldn't gather in big groups. Therefore, I'm not for people getting paid when they're not working. I'm for paying people who are working.
All right, well, it is time. All right, uh, real quick, as we got, we're running out of time, uh, Zalba's.
I think it's really important to remember that we have a great foundation here in Clovis for public safety. But public safety is not the only thing that we have to support in a vibrant community. We're not living, you know, we're, we're not all living in a prison cell where what we need are, are, you know, cause continuous modeling, monitoring from the police. A vibrant community is made up of a whole host of things that a city council is responsible for overseeing. So having people come to the table to make appropriate decisions that allow for the support of the whole community is what we need to be looking at. It's not just the dollars and cents. You gave exactly this dollar at this time or that time or saying, we're gonna fully fund this. No one is trying to defund our police. No one is taking resources away. But we have to look at the whole picture and support all of the pieces that make up a vibrant community. And that is not just public safety.
All right, well, we are running, Vong, uh, I got ten seconds. We, we, we gotta.
No, I, I, I just wanted to say that, see, this is where councils get in danger of ruining a city when we think we know too much.
Okay, good. Short, short sweets, short and sweet, councilman.
Humble ourselves, be quiet, listen to our staff who are the experts at what they do.
All right, now it's time to offer you, you uh some closing remarks. And just a reminder that election, March second, ballots are already mailed to all registered voters. It's an out-large election, so there'll be five names in the ballot. Voters will choose two. And as I call on you, I want you to answer the question, what makes you the best candidate? What makes you better than your opponents? We will start this last round and you'll have up to two minutes. Councilwoman Ashbeck.
What were my two questions again?
What makes you the best candidate? What makes you better than the rest?
One of the hallmarks of the city of Clovis has been, over the years, tested, steady, trusted, proven leadership. I offer that because of my experience on the city council. And I think that I'm the only candidate in the race that can offer a track record of proven results that when you drive around the city, you can appreciate the improvements that have happened in the last ten years, twenty years, thirty years. So I think in terms of trusted and proven, I am that candidate. I also really have a strong desire to communicate the idea that local government is not politics. And I have seen in this race more sort of misrepresentations and things that aren't true. And uh, politics kind of finding their way in. That's not local government. Local government is about building a community up and finding things we share, not what divides us. So I have a track record, uh, twenty years of service in the city council, proven results, trusted relationships, and I am the best candidate to continue serving as our community moves to the, an important phase of the next decade as we figure out kind of life after COVID nineteen.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Uh, Mr. Nagra, what makes you the best candidate? Uh, please give us your closing remarks, two minutes.
We don't need more politicians. As a business owner, I have ran a six million dollar revenue. I have excelled at our business from twenty fifteen when I took over, from aping average to being the top fifteen percent franchise-wide throughout the nation. I have negotiated contracts and bids. Right now in our city, nobody's negotiating those bids. They receive multiple bids, but nobody goes in and says, no, we can get more for our city. As a business owner, I'll be the first one to do that. I've lived here since I was nine years old. I want the best for our city.
Thank you very much. All right, we will hear from Ms. Zelboz. What makes you the best candidate in closing remarks?
Thank you. So as an immigrant, as someone who has had the, the pleasure of living in, in various different countries and, and working with a wide variety of different people with competing priorities and interests as an educator, as someone who has overseen multimillion dollar operations, what I excel most at is bringing people to the table who have opposing views, who have different views and finding shared common values and really rallying people around a common cause. And that's a big part of city council. We have a city that is quickly diversifying. We have people who have different needs. We have departments that have different needs and differing interests. And it's important that everyone's perspective is considered and that we are all working together towards a shared outcome. Um, this is not a partisan, uh, this, you know, this is not a partisan role. It is incredibly important that all of our kids are going to wonderful public schools. It is important that we all feel safe in our homes, that we feel safe frequenting our businesses, that we're excited to open new businesses here. And I know how to bring people to the table and I know how to engage them around these common goals. So I really look forward to earning your vote and your support on March the second. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Monta Tua, what is your pitch for people to reelect you to the Fresno City, oh, excuse me, the Clovis City Council?
Yeah, I don't wanna go in Fresno. Well, you know, first of all, it, it, it takes a while to learn city government. And it takes, it takes just being able to read and to understand. And it takes relationships and to understand that. I'm the only person who has went to all the unions of the city. And so I've got and, and, and encouraged them to get involved and to be, to endorse the Clovis Professional and Technical Association, the Clovis Transit Employees, the Clovis Employees Association, and the Clovis Public Works and police and fire. That means we know we are gonna work together. Because without us working together, we can't do anything that we, we say that we want. I also value safe neighborhoods and I wanna keep us being the safest city in the valley. And so because of that, not only do I vote and support public safety measures, public safety believes that I will also do that. So that's why I have the support of uh former chief, uh Chief Baskel. I also support small businesses and you can, you know, you can see it by the support of the open central California uh House of Juju, um Julie Glenn, Louis Evert, um and Manny Peralas of Yosemite Falls Cafe. Their group and even other small businesses say, this is the person who will stand when no one stands, who will show when no one shows, will speak when no one speaks. And so not just um ver- words, but actual action to support it. Third, I'm gonna keep working with the Clovis Unified School District. I have the support of only, all of, pretty much all of this school board. And so we will continue to work together, say, how do we get kids back in school safely and continue that working relationship together? So that way the city and the school district can mirror each other and be a, a shiny beacon for everyone.
All right, Councilman, if you can wrap it up here.
And I would appreciate your vote to serve you another four years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And uh, we will conclude the last word for our forum debate this evening. It's Diane Pierce.
So much for the opportunity to come together and share our ideas on these important issues. I wanna say that as a business owner who was impacted by the shutdowns and everything of the past year, it sent me out to our businesses to see what their experience had been with the council and the support they did or didn't receive. And those business owners told me to a person that they didn't feel heard. Nobody came to them. And that was the impetus for my campaign. I have the support also of House of Juju, Julie Glenn, of Manny Peralas with Yosemite Falls Cafe, and of Bert Liberta at Luna Pizzeria. These people were impacted and they wanted a voice. And they were pleased to find out that someone was going to run with that business owner mentality. Because the other thing I noticed over the past year is that of our five-member council, they are all fine people. But none of them are self-employed. And none of them did miss a paycheck from their regular jobs last year. And when we see the impact the decisions have on our business community, I think it's important that we would have a voice on the council. I also think that you should look and see how people are campaigning and where they are campaigning if you want to know how they will serve. I have enjoyed the many months I spent out in our neighborhoods, knocking on doors and talking with so many of our residents. And I've been humbled by the support they've shown to me as a first-time candidate and the appreciation they express by my taking the time to come to them in person to campaign for a seat on our council. I tell them, if you wanna know how hard someone's gonna work in office, see how hard they're willing to work to earn your vote. And if you want to see if someone really wants to represent you in office, see how they focus their campaign. Are they out collecting thousands of dollars from special interests? Or are they coming personally, yet socially distanced, to your front door? I'm here to offer leadership. It's not politics. It's not political. It's leadership. And I would defend that Clovis way of life and the local control on which it was built.
All right, well, you've heard from all five candidates. The election wants to get to March second. Five names appear on the ballot. You go to pick two. It'll be Noah Albaz, Diane Pierce, Herman Nagra, Lynn Ashbeck, or Von Monta Tua. It's up to you. Thank you so much for watching our Clovis City Council Forum, our GV Wire tonight. I'm David Taub. Good night.